Welcome, everyone, to our City Council Work Session for April 27. I’m going to make some comments later this evening about our sister city, but I think I’ll do it at the regular meeting instead of now where we have more people here. Okay, and the other thing is I’m going to try to leave some time that maybe we can get our consent calendar out of the way and maybe make a little time for being able to talk through items during our regular meetings, so we’ll see how that goes. We have two things now that both need to have 45 minutes, and that’s Envision Eugene Housing Update and Micro Housing. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a busy agenda, so I’ll just turn it over to Robin and his team to get us started.
I’m going to borrow Terry’s. Does he like to sing a duet?
No.
Take that one?
Islands in the stream.
Could do that.
Here we go.
I think I started.
So, as you know, the community and staff have been working hard on a UGB recommendation for several years now, and we’ve reached a point where there’s a population forecast on the horizon, and we just need to be clear about what you want to do with that. So it’s certainly no surprise that the forecast is coming out. Nearly every other city that goes through the UGB update process experiences the same thing, where you’re partway into the process and at some point a new forecast comes out. It’s really, it’s par for the course, so even though the proposed number won’t be finalized until as late as June 30th, we wanted to make sure you’re aware the information is coming out, help you understand what it could mean in terms of the UGB adoption process, and also what your choices are around that. So essentially, it boils down to two basic options for what you can do with the new forecast. Option A, and we’ll explain these in a little more detail, but I’ll just hit them here at a high level for you. Option A is to finish what we’ve started using the current adopted forecast from Portland State University. That’s been the basis for all of our assumptions and all of our work to date, and included in that is addressing the new population forecast, whatever that may be, as part of our Pillar Seven monitoring process after we have a UGB in place. So this option also includes some other things that council could do to be proactive about making sure all that work gets done while still allowing us to finish the process that we’re in right now. So one of the important things to note under Option A is that state rules are actually designed to allow communities to do this. Under state rules, cities have the right to use the population forecast that was in effect when the UGB update is initiated. So Eugene, that would have eventually been in 2012, and that was shortly after council gave direction on the original Envision Eugene recommendation. And because of that, we’re legally protected to move ahead with the current process that we’re in. So the reason the state rule is there is that, as we know, the UGB update process and all the analysis and decision-making that goes along with that can be a time-consuming and pretty complex process. So the rule gives cities the ability to make it through that process without needing to restart under the new population figure. So since forecasts will be forthcoming now about every three years, there’s a potential there for communities to get caught in sort of an endless loop of updating information. So the rule helps communities avoid that. However, we also want to be very clear that you do have the option to use a new forecast, and that’s what Option B is about. So Option B is really to wait and see what that final population figure may be, then try to incorporate that into the process now and essentially rebuild our assumptions, our analysis, and our strategies around that new population figure. Again, we don’t know what that number will be, so we don’t know all the implications yet, but we can make some educated guesses and give you an outline of what that might look like. So at this point, I’ll turn it over to Terry and Alyssa to give you a little more detail about both of those options and also what’s going on with the forecast itself.
Thank you, Robin. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My job today is just to take a few minutes to remind you about the recommendation that we presented back in February. You might recall the primary reason we’re here today rather than back in February is we wanted to give the community a little bit more time to look over the revised analysis. There were some changes between December and February, and they deserved a careful look by members in the community and also the Technical Resource Group. So since then, we’ve been waiting for reactions and any new information or arguments to surface that would cause us to change the recommendation. And as I said to you back in February, our analysis has been rigorous and data-driven, and we remain confident that our analysis of land capacity and development assumptions is technically and legally sound. And in fact, there hasn’t been anything additional from a technical standpoint that would cause us to change the recommendation for housing. So that current recommendation includes, just as a reminder, accommodating our 20-year housing needs within the existing urban growth boundary, and it also includes providing services such as wastewater to enable development of land currently planned for single-family and all other kinds of housing, resolving current transportation limitations to areas within the urban growth boundary through our in-process update to the local transportation system plan, and planning for the development of recently re-designated land, almost 200 acres, including land in the Crow Road area. In addition, we’re committed to adopting a comprehensive monitoring program concurrent with UGB adoption. This program will track the progress of land consumption and other key indicators of development capacity on a regular basis. But in light of this upcoming population forecast, one thing the council could choose to do to be more proactive is to shorten the first interval of monitoring. We’ve been talking about a five-year cycle. We could shorten that to three years, for example. The timing of the reports and process for reviewing the data and analysis and decision-making based on the results will be spelled out in an ordinance. This is the current top priority of work for our Technical Resource Group. We’ve also talked about planning for longer-term growth under the state process of urban reserve planning. This is a component of the current recommendation, but that work could be prioritized by securing dedicated funding for the analysis of a 50-year growth projection and all the same components included in planning for the 20-year UGB only for more people. Urban reserves allows us to comprehensively plan for complete neighborhoods with a mix of housing types, commercial services, parks and schools, and potentially jobs, as well as all modes of transportation. So as Robin said, this is encapsulated in your agenda item summary as Option A. It’s the current recommendation, and it completes the analysis that we started a few years ago and addresses future population forecasts through the monitoring program and urban reserves planning. But the other policy option out there is Option B. It would address forthcoming population forecasts through updating our analysis for all of our housing information. So that’s going to be Alyssa’s job today, to walk you through the population forecasting process, tell you where we are in that and what’s involved, and then walk you through the steps that would need to occur if you choose to follow that option.
Thank you, Terry. So I just want to talk a little bit about why population is coming up at this point. As you know, population does really play a key role in planning for any city’s land need, particularly this 20-year land need. Until recently, state law required that the county prepare the coordinated population forecasts. What was noted is that this really yielded a diverse set of methods. They often use different methodologies, and it wasn’t done on a regular basis in each county. Some were really good at updating it, others not so much. So a few years ago, the state legislation approved that the Population Research Center at Portland State University would be in charge of the coordinated population forecasting for the entire state, so it becomes a statewide program. And the intent there is to ensure consistent methodology across the state for counties and cities and to ensure regular updates, so regardless of how much money one county has over another, that every county would get a regular update. So this is a brand-new statewide program, and every city and county will receive a coordinated population forecast with a 50-year forecast with five-year intervals, and they will receive one of these forecasts every three to four years. They’re going to be prepared and released in three groups, so roughly a third of the state will get them every year. Lane County, along with Eugene and the other cities in our county, happen to be part of the first group, and we’re the very first set of counties and cities to be getting our population forecasts under this new program. So there’s nine other counties, and their corresponding cities are also getting their new population forecasts under this. It really is a three-step process, or at least when you boil it down, it is. The first step is the forecast development, which culminated in a preliminary forecast that we received back in March. And then the next step is the forecast review, where PSU issues the proposed forecast, which is what we’re calling the draft forecast. And that was issued earlier this month, and that is followed by a 45-day period where if somebody has additional information they want to submit, it’s really, it’s called an objection period, so people can submit information if they have concerns about the forecast or they think that additional information needs to be considered. And then the forecast must be finalized by Portland State no later than June 30th, 2015. And again, that will be what we’re referring to as our future forecast. As Terry mentioned, we’re looking at two options. Option A, which is the current recommendation, using our currently adopted forecast to finish the analysis and use the future forecast for the monitoring and urban reserves, or Option B, which would be to use the future forecast for our analysis. So if you want to turn to this green sheet here, I’m just going to start with that. This really has the phases of work that we would need to do or that we’ve completed under each option. So starting with Option A on the left, as you know, we have completed our technical analysis, which got us to what is our housing need. So we’ve completed that work. We completed the work of the land use efficiency strategies, and those were measures to accommodate more housing inside our urban growth boundary. You might recall the re-designations that Terry referenced that occurred in the Crow Road area. Those were part of our land use efficiency strategies. We started the urban growth boundary expansion analysis, and then through the additional work and technical analysis, that work was unneeded at that time. So the next steps under Option A, if we’re to continue under that option, are preparing the documents for the actual adoption of the urban growth boundary and then the formal adoption process, which ultimately ends with a public, a joint public hearing with you all and the Lane County Board of Commissioners, and then adoption and state acknowledgement. If we are to use the future population forecast for our analysis, we actually, the first step we’d actually have to do is adopt that population number into whatever our comprehensive plan is. Currently, that is the Metro Plan. And then we would need to either update and, in some cases, actually redo our technical analysis. We need to bring it current through 2015, since we would have a new planning, a new 20-year planning period that would be starting in 2015. So that would include our buildable lands inventory, our housing needs analysis. We’d need to look at how those properties have developed over the past several years and have densities changed. We look at redevelopment, how has that occurred? And we would really need to look at all of that and also have it vetted by our Technical Resource Group. As Terry mentioned, we had a very robust technical analysis, and we would want to be committed to that same kind of process again. And one thing I do want to mention, I think there might be a perception that our land use model is, you know, we would just insert this new number, push a couple buttons, pull a couple levers, and it would spit out the answer. And unfortunately, it doesn’t work that way. It’s a lot more complicated. We have, you know, all sorts of different programs, different data, different resources that we actually have to tap into, and there’s a lot of manual inputs that actually get us to what this new housing need would be, and that would be both for multifamily and single-family. So once we have that need, once we know what our future need will be for single-family and multifamily housing and how much of that we can accommodate inside our urban growth boundary, we would move on to looking at new efficiency strategies. And I should probably pause at this point and point out that although we don’t know what this number is going to be in June, based on the draft number we have now, it does look like there would be an increase in need for single-family homes and multifamily homes above what we’re seeing right now. So we would, we need to look at whether or not we could accommodate any of those inside our current urban growth boundary through looking at land use efficiency measures, and that could be code amendments, that could be more re-designations, that could be looking at other investment tools. And again, that would be for both single-family and for multifamily, and those all require a public engagement process, probably upfront to talk about what different ideas there might be for accommodating these and then also as part of the adoption process. Again, there would be an urban growth boundary expansion, analysis, and process, and we’d need to determine what we’re going to do with the additional multifamily, whether or not those would be accommodated through the land use efficiency strategies or if we also want to, or need to expand for those as well. So there’s a host of analysis that would need to be updated in that regard, and then we would get to the adoption package preparation and the formal adoption process. If you turn to the second page of my packet in front of you, that actually shows this in terms of timing, so now you know what the work involved is, but this kind of lays it out in terms of, you know, how much longer would it take? If I had that little machine where I could hit the levers and the buttons, it wouldn’t take as long, but we don’t have that. So if you take a look at Option A, which is kind of the first bar chart that goes along, we’ve done the first three boxes. We’ve determined our housing need through that technical analysis. We’ve adopted efficiency measures. We’ve done the urban growth boundary expansion, and now we’re, you know, we’re poised to start the adoption process, which would culminate in a new urban growth boundary. And we’re estimating that that would be, that that would occur in late 2015, early 2016. So within a year from now, we should have an urban growth boundary under this option. And I, you know, the good news is that we are moving ahead with jobs, parks, and schools, and this is a very similar timeline for that, so they would, that work could wrap up almost simultaneously. And you’ll notice that after the new urban growth boundary, we would be able to launch right away into the monitoring program and the urban reserve planning, again, using this future population number for those projects and programs. And then we could also then finally get started on the neighborhood and core projects that have been kind of on hold until we adopt our urban growth boundary. Now, under Option B, this is again using that future population. Assuming you gave us direction to do that, the next steps, as I mentioned, would be going back and redoing and revising and updating our technical analysis to figure out what our new housing need is, determining the new efficiency measures for both multifamily and single-family, updating the urban growth boundary expansion. And because of, just in, because of the draft population number we’re looking at, we know that we would be looking at, we think we’d be looking at more area than we were originally looking at. If you remember the expansion areas we were proposing in December, the way the numbers are aligning, we think it would be potentially larger than even those areas, just to kind of give you a ballpark. Following the UGB expansion analysis, then we would move into the adoption process, preparing those materials, and then culminating in a new UGB, optimistically, late 2018. And then we could start with the monitoring program, the urban reserve planning, and the neighborhood planning at that point. You can see along the bottom, we’ve also put in the population forecast, so we know we’ll be getting our final, final population forecast under this round by June 30th, no later than June 30th. We know that they’re going to be on a three- to four-year cycle, so it’s most likely we will have a new population forecast again in June 30th of 2018. So that’s all I wanted to say, just to kind of walk you through those timing implications and phases of work.
Robert, did you have anything to add? Okay. So you’re ready for us to talk about whether we prefer A or B, correct?
That’s true, and I just want to, we’re actually not looking for the council to land tonight. If, what we’re looking for is feedback, if you want additional information that you want us to bring back before you make a final decision. Of course, you always have the option to make your decisions whenever, but we’re looking for additional feedback and information you may need.
But let me just be clear, you’re looking for additional information. If somebody decided to land, that’s...
That’s up to you, of course, and we do, it would be helpful for us to get a sense of where the council is headed, and if you need additional information before you land it, that would also be helpful for us to know.
So I have Mike in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Manager, since there’s no recommendation here, although I heard several staff folks say they have made a recommendation to us.
That’s the recommendation that you received a couple of months ago?
So that, I understand where it came from. I was just saying, it sounds like you’re making a recommendation about which option we should choose. That’s what the presentation I just got sounded like to me.
I’m not making a recommendation tonight.
Okay. Am I to understand you that we will have a vote and make a determination which course to follow at some future point?
That’s up to you when you want to have the actual vote. We’re not anticipating a vote today.
I’m not asking you if we’re voting today. I’m saying there will come a time when we will have a vote on which direction to take, though, right? If it’s not tonight, it will be soon?
You’ll, well, I’m not legally what they’re requiring.
The answer is yes. The staff is looking to the council to say whether you want to proceed with Option A or Option B. You can do that tonight, or you can do it at a future meeting, but until you give the direction as to whether you want to proceed with Option A or Option B, staff will not return with the next steps.
Okay.
Does that answer what...
It does, but it’s unclear, because the only way we can give staff accurate and binding direction is to take a vote.
Correct. And that vote could be tonight, or that vote could be at a future meeting. I think what the city manager was trying to explain is you can choose to vote tonight if you want. If you have questions that you need answers to, then we’ll come back at a future meeting with that additional information, and then you can make a motion. At some point, we will want you to make a motion.
Okay. I have to say, I’m kind of surprised a little bit that we don’t, I mean, this whole process that we’ve gone through has been about being prepared. It’s been about progressively planning for the future in an intelligent way. We have numbers from the official people that do them. We know they’re going to be bigger. We know we’re going to have to make official plans. But what we’re saying essentially by choosing Option A is, well, yeah, we know we’re going to have to do this work, but we can get away with not doing it for another three years legally on a technicality. And I have to say, I mean, that’s what, if I can, that’s the way it sounds to me, and that, I have a real problem with that, because I don’t think that’s a wise way for us to plan. Frankly, from my opinion, we don’t go far enough. Here’s one of the other pieces that, if we’re going to come back and vote on this at a future point, there’s two important things to say here. Number one, I don’t know how many of my colleagues watched the county commissioners’ meeting of a couple of weeks ago, but maybe Glenn or Emily, you could tell me what occurs when a county commission says no and they don’t co-adopt with us?
In order for the council to, well, in order for there to be a new UGB, just like any other change to the comprehensive plan that applies outside the city limits, the city and the county need to agree. So if the council says A and the county commissioners say B or C or D, then nothing proceeds to the state because you don’t yet have agreement. So if you remember, there used to be the Metro Plan, MPC, process. So if the council wants to proceed in one direction and the county commissioners aren’t interested in proceeding that, then the two bodies would have to get together and agree on how to proceed.
We had a clear comment the other day during their meeting that there are four clear votes not to approve with us unless we use the new numbers, and that they also had concerns about getting clear direction from DLCD on objective standards first, and they were a little concerned with our housing mix. So we can make, you know, we can make decisions, but if we can’t work together with them effectively, we can’t create the end result we’re looking for. And here’s the other piece. Actually, I’m going to, since I only have 25 seconds, I’m going to ask the mayor for a second round, and I’m going to say, we really badly need to use the most accurate information, and everyone up here made those comments, and I think we were emailed quotes of what we said when the last set of new information was presented to us. So I would find it surprising if we don’t still want to use the best, most accurate, and newest information.
Claire, and then Chris?
And Counselor Brown. So I would not hearken back to that other conversation. I think those comments were made in an entirely different context, quite frankly, in terms of the particular quotes that were sent back to us. I think this is actually a situation where there are strong arguments for either option. And, you know, in light of the work and the years of effort so far, it’s hard to think, oh, gosh, we’re going to extend this another three years before we land on something. So that definitely gives me pause. And what I read in our AIS was this was an opportunity for Ask for Additional Information. We might like to help assess out where we might land. So one question I have, a couple of questions I have, was could we get some analysis on how past population forecasts have actually played out in reality and how close those numbers ended up being to what actually ended up happening on the ground? I think that’s an important factor before we get all worried about which of the numbers their forecasts, they’re not reality. And then, you know, we haven’t planned for this additional workload, so I would like some budget analysis on what will be the cost to the city to wait until June 30th and go back and do all this work again, because we have not budgeted for that, I’m assuming. And to compare that to what I’m assuming you have been thinking about for budgeting for the process that we ostensibly had laid out before us before the new forecasts were In that detail, you know, what would be the addition, what would be the cost to do a review sooner? So instead of five years, to do our review in 2018? Because in theory, we could continue with Option A, and then in 2018, use the updated forecast numbers, the ones that are going to come out June 30th, to look at where we’re at and do our review. So in a sense, we would kind of get the best of both scenarios, not having to go back and do everything, but have those updated numbers in 2018 and see where we’re at. So, you know, we have a lot of other stuff sitting out there waiting for us to finish this. I think it’d be a real shame if the county commissioners decided to, you know, I would like to hear the reasons for wanting us to go with Option B if we all, as a body, decided Option A was really where we needed to go as a city.
Chris?
Thank you. Interesting dilemma. One of the challenges I had when I used to work with clients on interpreting data was, depending on the source of the data, you didn’t want to get too obsessed with the difference between one tiny percent and another tiny percent. Sometimes, because of the sample you were dealing with or the speculation on it, you had to allow for a certain degree of error. And we’re predicting the future, and so the notion that I want a precise prediction of the future is in itself kind of difficult to do. Now, I realize the population forecasts we’ve gotten have traditionally been pretty good, pretty good, not precise. So depending on the figures we get, I mean, if the figures were varying from, the original number was 20,000 and now the number’s 40,000, I, like Mike, would be very concerned that we want to make sure we have the most current figure. But if the difference is between 36,000 and 40,000, that’s a number that probably is within the realm of being able to accommodate, at least, now we’re talking about 15 or 20 years out. We could probably work with that within the system. With that being said, I hear what you’re saying, that legally, we could do either one of these. one of these. So from the legal standpoint, I'm not nervous that we're somehow going to be out of compliance with the state, and I appreciate your putting me at ease on that. But I also want to make sure that we do the right thing. And the right thing is the one that says, what is our best guess for the future? What is the most reasonable accommodation we can make for that future, and still retain flexibility for those things that may come along that we can't anticipate, or that may vary, that may change, either up or down? So the question for me, or the concern for me, is, do both of these options have built within them sufficient flexibility for us to be able to adapt, change, and reflect as we go? And from what I understand, because what's built into this is some ongoing milestones that we could do either one of these, but if, let's say we went with Option A, for the sake of getting things done in a more expeditious way, I wouldn't want to do it. I would be nervous about doing it in a way where I felt that we would make a decision, it was cast in concrete, and there was no flexibility to adapt as new things occurred, whether it was a population change, or an earthquake, or a drought in the South. I want to know, we have a system that will have built into it the ability to adapt and be flexible. And what I'm hearing is that you're building in some monitoring procedures, some reserve opportunities, and some other milestones along the way where I don't have to feel like I have painted myself into a corner that I can't get out of. That's the most important thing for me. Not knowing what the future is, the best thing I can do is build some flexibility in for a future I can't predict with precision.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. I see arguments for both cases. I always like to have the most recent, I won't say most accurate, we can't say the latest, this forecast that's coming up in June is going to be any more accurate than any preceding forecast. The one thing that I think that we do know is that pretty much every single forecast, starting in 1977, has been wrong, and really, in some cases wildly inflated about how much the population was going to increase. You know, it's ElCog, that's the U of O, that's Portland State twice, and now again. It's fluctuating just within a few months, it's going kind of crazy. I still have in my mind which options to support. I kind of like Option B, and hoping that wouldn't take all that long to finalize it. I really think that if we did Option B, we would get the most recent, but not to say accurate, forecast, and that would be the last one, I believe. So that's like the last one until, it'd be five years before the next one. Did I mishear that section of your talk, 3, I see? Okay. So that's a possibility, and, I mean, you know, there've been some trends that I've noticed from all this discussion is, I think we could update our density assumptions, first of all. I mean, we're going to, the second part of this session, we're going to talk about microhousing. That's fitting a lot more people in a smaller space, and people want to do that. They want little homes. A lot of boomers, you know, want to downsize, and sometimes to an apartment, or condominium, or a little microhouse. So I, and plus, we've seen of the things that have been developed recently, and not just student housing. Every single project the last two or three years, except for one, was actually under the assumed density. Everything else has been over, in some cases pretty significantly, which frees up space for other developments on other land, you know? Those units didn't go on that land, they were built more densely on the project site. So I think those need, the density assumptions could be updated, and I really think the housing mix assumption probably needs to be set closer to 50/50, because that's also a current trend. But these would be arguments for choosing Option B, getting the current. On the other hand, we could probably do those things that I just mentioned if we chose Option A. Would that be a possibility, to go ahead and use the figures that we've already landed on, and do updates via, you know, increasing density assumptions, or redevelopment assumptions, or a housing mix? Could we do that later, after we get the next?
We would do that through the monitoring program. Several of the key things that we hope to monitor are the mix, the density, and the land consumption rates. So those would be begun immediately upon UGB adoption.
Okay, and that would be the first, the first look would be really soon, then, right? If we went ahead with the...
Well, we've been talking about five years for our first monitoring check-in. It's at your option to try to speed that work up, and I heard a request for a cost estimate for doing that. So we would prefer that.
Okay, thank you.
So can you give me a little bit of history, a little background on the recent population forecast? First, it was, the old one was 36, and the first one came out, it was 40, and then the second came out, it was less than 36, and now it's somewhere closer to 40. Not exactly building a lot of confidence in the population forecast to start with. Can you give me a little bit of history, what's going on there?
Yes, so we have gone to a couple of meetings that Portland State University hosted for our region of counties, and one, I will say, it is a new program for them, and they are doing 10 counties at one time, so I think it was a lot of work for them. But what I understand, or at least that for our particular forecast, is what they're looking at is migration, births, and deaths, and so that's what they use for our forecast. They provided us the preliminary forecast, the first one you referenced, back in mid-March or so, and after that meeting that they hosted with a bunch of different cities and the county, they readjusted the starting population. So they actually looked at the 2015 number, which is the starting of the 50-year population, and they readjusted that. Apparently, according to them, it had some cumulative effect that they didn't like how it did that cumulative effect, so that's why they actually issued that third, the third draft that we have at this point. It was always assumed that there would be a preliminary, and a proposed, and a final. We got a smoothing out in between two of those. So really, it is, I mean, expected that there would be three, three different drafts, or two drafts and one final of this.
Where is it now?
So we have a, we have what's called the proposed population forecast, and it's in a 45-day review period that people can submit additional information about, and then they will issue the final based on June...
What's the number?
What is the number?
It's about 40.
About 40. Yeah, I think it's about 40.
39 something.
Probably, yeah, that sounds about right.
Yeah, I guess there's a case for both of these, that's why you delayed them out like this. In one case, if we do Option A, we can get to a UGB sooner, and then we can get on to those things that I think are very important, too, which are the neighborhood corridor plan study or projects, especially the university neighborhood, university area, special area study. We've been waiting two years to even start that process, and this mean, if we go with Option A, we can start that next year, which will be three years, or we could start it in 2019, or something like that. Is there a way to start that earlier if you went with Option B? You just can't start that because you don't have the bandwidth to be able to do something like that?
Correct.
Unfortunately, it's the same, same people doing this work that would be doing that work, so.
Right. So, and, yeah, and so we have a limited amount of budget, and, well, maybe the county commissioners would like to help us pay for this process, and then we could get this going faster. So then, with Option B, we don't get a new urban growth boundary until 2018, right about when we would almost be starting our second round, right? So either way, we're not going to be in a very good position, but with Option A, you kind of see where we would get something sooner. And if we did go with Option B, basically, essentially, starting over. You'd go back and you'd go through all of the assumptions, multifamily, single-family ratio, density, population forecast, you just run the whole, the whole numbers again, which is what we've been doing for like two years. So all the stuff that we've done, more than two years, all the stuff that we've done, basically chuck it out the window. It, well, you learn from it, but it's not useful data if we decide to go to new population forecast, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fair to say.
Anything?
So where, are there, so if we did go with Option A, are there things, you talked about accelerating the review cycle. We were initially talking about five years, but accelerating it to maybe do a three-year cycle, which you put it almost in line with Option B. What are the things that we can do to accelerate the review cycle if we went with Option A that would help us get to almost the same time as Option B in terms of urban growth boundary review? What are those things that we would do?
Well, the first thing is, when the monitoring ordinance comes to you, you can specify that review interval right within the ordinance. So that's how the climate recovery ordinance was structured, the review timing was wrapped right into the ordinance, so that can be specified. And I think the second thing you can do is, although I know there's not extra budget sitting around, is think about resources and funding the urban reserve analysis component so that that can start now, rather than waiting for the same, you know, staff that are working on adopting the UGB to begin that work. Those are the two things that we've, we've come up with so far.
I guess it's not really a budget increase, it's just that we wouldn't be doing other, we wouldn't be getting on to these other things, we'd be starting doing...
Well, we could hire additional staff, or we could contract with someone to start that analysis.
Without being an extra budget. Thanks.
So I've got Betty, and George Poling, and Greg, and then we're going to be having to close this particular topic down because we have one more to get through this evening. Betty?
Thank you. This could take as long as previous things have taken. Haven't, as I understand it, the forecasts have always been higher than what actually happened. Isn't that true?
They have. Always, but we can... Yeah, I don't know about always, but over the last 30, 40 years, the original metro plan forecast was...
That's always enough.
Yeah. We will provide... Quite high.
Okay, I thought Claire brought up a good point when she asked about that. I think if I were choosing, I'd choose Option A of these two. I do think that we can change the housing mix that we project, that we intend to strive toward, and we can strive for more density, which we've said we want to anyway, and efficient uses of land. There isn't any more land being created, and we need to use it efficiently. So between these two, my, and also, we need to conserve energy, and Option A does more of that than B. So that would be my choice if I were to vote right now. And my choice also would be not to spend many hours discussing this. Thank you.
George Poling?
Thank you. You know, we can discuss around the table all we want about how accurate or inaccurate the population forecasts are, but unfortunately, that's the tool that we're in a position that we have to use to make these decisions. So to me, how accurate it is, is not as great of a concern as it is to maybe some of my fellow councilors. It's just the nature of the beast that we have to deal with. You know, whenever I make a decision, I like to make that decision based on the most up-to-date and accurate information that we have. We changed course as a council last time we discussed this, based on new information that was brought to us at the very last moment. We have information that we know is coming down the line, that we can make our decision based on that, which is more accurate, more current, or we can make a decision based on information that's outdated, and that's going to put us behind where we should be when we get this process done. And, you know, I'm not a, I'm not an urban planner, I don't profess to be, but I just don't see how we will have to basically, as Alan said, throw everything out and start over. To me, a lot of this is just modeling, and mathematics, and computer work. At least, that's the way I interpret it. So I just don't see how we can delay, if we chose Option B, how it, how it would put us three years behind schedule in making a decision based on Option A, on outdated information, when we know we've got current information coming up in a month and a half, is, to me, the more logical thing to do, and give us a better, a better decision and choices.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. In dovetailing what Counselor Poling said, I would be more comfortable with having the most up-to-date information that we could to be able to make the best informed decision. From my perspective, and I'm kind of just throwing this out as a caveat here, I think that we have, we have some challenges in terms of determining what the need is, but also what the demand is going to be for single-family units versus multi, you know, multi-unit structures being built and constructed, and the availability of lands to, you know, build those, those units based upon not only the need, but what will the demand be? And demand is a lot harder to predict than need, but we shape the demand to a large degree by what we get ready to put in place here. So I'm, I'm having a difficult time in terms of reconciling where we need to land, on what set of data we need to land on. I want to respect the process that we have already had in terms of the, you know, Technical Resource Group, and, you know, all the work that has been done by staff up to this point. But, you know, I'm really reticent to, you know, move forward when we have other data that has the ability to reinform us, for lack of a better way of putting it, and being more predictable, because we have a number of entities out there that are going to be working on this data. I mean, you've got, you know, developers in the housing market that are going to look and say, you know, we need to know where to go, how to, how to position ourselves, and how to do this. We need to also look at what kinds of things that we are going to be building, as well as what, you know, we are looking to achieve with our goals around density. So I'm more in favor of looking at something that is going to give us more predictability, more accurate predictability, and something that, you know, we can land on that will be commensurate with, you know, what the county is looking at as well. So those are my two cents for the moment.
Just a couple of comments from me, and one is that I just think we have to remember that the numbers that we started this process were the numbers that we were given to start this process with, and that was the direction that we were given, was to base the analysis on the numbers, the population numbers we were given at that time, and over, and of course, because this is iterative, over time, you're going to go back and check, and things are going to change, and we can, we can add to that. And I guess my only other comment is, I just don't respond to threats very well. Mike?
May I just make my quick request for additional information, Mayor?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I spoke with Risa Proll from PSU a couple of weeks ago, and talked about methodology with her for a while. And as is outlined, they take first births and deaths comparing 2000 to 2010 census trends, and they project forward with the particular demographic groups as they move through the snake of time, as it were. Then they say, okay, well, everything that was left was in migration of our rise in numbers over time. So they add a small factor to that in-migration number, and that's what they project forward with in migration. But one of the things that she was very clear they don't do is, this population forecast was developed from the 10-year, 15-year past, from 2000 to 2010's in migration, and projected forward. It has absolutely nothing in it for anything that we may experience in the way of climate refugees, nothing. So either we're going to plan for one of the greatest droughts in the history of our country, in the American Southwest, and we're going to add numbers to this, and here's my request. Considering that there is nothing in this forecast, taking into consideration climate refugees, I would like to hear from staff, their considered opinion on the range that that number could land... that number could land in within the 20-year window. What do you think we're going to see in the way of climate change refugees over the course of that 20-year window because of, if not just, the drought in the Southwest? Thank you.
And I would be curious if the state has done any analysis.
They have, according to recent. It's interesting.
All right, we're going to move on to the next item. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The next item is microhousing.
I'll turn it over to Sarah to get us going on that conversation.
We'll make a micro UGB, a microhouse.
You're back here?
This topic of microhousing is pretty interesting. It's come up a number of times over the last couple of years in different contexts. One has been around, is this a potential model for housing affordability? For some, it's been a possible model for how we might help the homeless. For others, it's a different type of lifestyle, this kind of trend of living lighter on the land and a smaller footprint. And others, it's an economic development tool, personal income tool. So tonight is really just an opportunity to start to set a context and common understanding of what the terms are related to microhousing. And Kristi Brown is here as one of our land use experts to kind of do that high-level introduction. No action necessary today, but I think what we're hoping to do is start to get a sense of where council might want to go with this, especially in context of what we just talked about.
Hello. So I have a presentation for you today. It is a PowerPoint. You do also have that in front of you, so you can follow along on that as well, especially if it's hard for you to see. So as Sarah said, there are many ways these types of home have been used, from single homes, less than 800 square feet, to units as small as 80 square feet, constructed on trailers. Small homes may be used as a primary residence on a lot, or as a secondary dwelling unit, as well as many small homes located on a single development site. Today's presentation, we will be covering primarily the microhousing types, Opportunity Village Eugene, land use and building code, related policies, and of course, with time for discussion and questions. So the term "microhousing" can be used to describe a spectrum of housing types, such as a tiny house, cluster housing, congregate housing, and micro apartments. All those pictures were from Eugene as well. So first, I'm going to start with microapartments. Tiny apartments are hardly a new thing, obviously. They are essentially a one-room studio with a self-contained living space, usually designed to accommodate a space for sitting, sleeping, a bathroom, and a kitchenette, ranging in size from 200 to 500 square feet. Congregate living is a type of housing in which each individual or family has a private bedroom or living quarters, but shares with other residents a common dining room, recreation room, or other facilities. And some of these examples you can see here are dorms and senior housing. A modern version of congregate living is what you see here. It's called a single-room occupancy. They're becoming more and more popular in urban areas by providing relatively affordable Cohousing communities is a type of intentional collaborative housing in which residents live independently, actively participate in activities of daily living with other residents as one chooses. The neighborhood's physical design, as you can see here, typically encourages both individual space and social contact. Private homes, though, are usually not any smaller than what you would see typically in the city of Eugene. They're not always tiny, but you could have a tiny housing, co-housing, living opportunity as well. And then, of course, but last but not least, the tiny house. So here, as you know, growing in popularity, tiny houses are very common. People choose to use them for many different things. Some choose to downsize their lives, look for affordable accommodations. Tiny homes can be as small as 160 square feet and are allowed currently by building code, complete with living, sleeping, cooking, and bathroom facilities, and in some cases, they can even be smaller. Here you have a secondary dwelling unit, actually a very nice one, I think we'd all like to probably live there. This is actually one in Eugene, over Off River Road, actually. It's another type of tiny house. They often measure between 300 to 800 square feet. They are secondary to a primary dwelling on the property. So cluster housing. Residential cluster housing is a grouping of small houses on a development site, often around a courtyard or common garden. There also allows for extra land to be used for open space, recreation, or agriculture. Here you have a cluster subdivision. Cluster subdivision has at least six lots with dwellings grouped in a manner that creates common open space that is suitable for use by residents through the relaxation of the lot and development standards. So Opportunity Village Eugene created a self-managed community of low-cost tiny houses for those in need of housing. Opportunity Village Eugene was created with a conditional use permit as temporary housing. The things we've learned in making it a permanent solution, building code implications, zoning, oversight, and costs. So the building code is the next slide here, and you can see we have a slide of a tiny house on wheels. The first is the building code, which establishes a minimum standard to ensure safe, durable, and accessible structures. It does address a variety of things, ranging from wiring methods to ceiling heights, but there is nothing in the building code that prohibits a tiny house. The building code seldom prohibits design elements and instead establishes minimum standards. Many tiny house designs incorporate specific elements that themselves have code challenges, such as ladder access to a sleeping loft or the size of a bathroom. For that reason, they are often made mobile by putting them on wheels to avoid being subject to building code. This probably is the cause of the misconception that a tiny house can't meet the building code requirements. And then there's land use. So the other general area for regulation is land use codes, as you know, which addresses uses on the property and where uses may or may not occur. The purpose of the land use code, of course, is to support the livability of our community. The code is found, of course, in Chapter 9, administered by city staff. Examples of current land use code regulations that may apply include size, location, height of small houses, and SDUs, where small houses that are mobile or on wheels can be located, and standards for multiple small homes on one parcel. Additional regulations regarding density, lot coverage, may also apply when microhousing is being constructed. Related policies you see here intersect with a number of city initiatives, including Invision Eugene and the Climate and Energy Action Plan. Invision Eugene's strategies and pillars related to microhousing include housing affordability by expanding housing variety, by facilitating smaller house types, anticipate and plan for climate and impact to housing, promote compact urban development, protect repair, and enhance neighborhood livability. And then as well, the Climate and Energy Action Plan, specifically relating to buildings and energy and land use and transportation. And actually, I have a note too. Also, the council's goals with sustainable development would be another one as well. That's not listed there. So I'm sure this is a lot to take in, so staff hopes that this information will help start the conversation. We look forward to your discussion on this topic, and we're here to answer a few questions. Oh, sorry. I just got so carried away. I actually also did prepare, you can see here on this blue sheet of paper that you have in front of you. This is the microhousing and allowances uses by zone. So I actually just tried to make this a spreadsheet to kind of show clearly the different housing types and what zones would be permitted and how. So this is currently how our land use code would address these types of uses. Sorry about that.
Thank you. I've got Greg and Alan in the queue, and Chris, and George Poling.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I'm really excited about this because this provides a tremendous opportunity for people who are, you know, living at the lower ends of our, you know, affordability spectrum, if you will, people who are, you know, working in service economy and other things. It gives them a type, a way of freedom and some privacy that heretofore has not, you know, been available in terms of what is available for dwelling units. And one of the questions that I have is, what this brings up for me is a way towards homeownership or unit ownership that I could see as being a more of a long-term solution than what is suggested as rental units. And so can you talk a little bit about that, if you have that kind of information in terms of other best practices in other places? Because I know some of this has gone on in some other parts of the country, but has anybody really begun to drill down on the issue of unit ownership, whether that's individual ownership, or whether that's in a collective model?
Yeah, absolutely. So obviously, in looking at a number of different communities, depending on the size of the community, the density, so you look to Seattle, New York, some of those locations, you're looking at more small, micro-sized apartments. That's typically, you know, what you're seeing in the ways of how they're dealing with that same, very same issue. They're not always owner-occupied or for purchase, they're usually a rental situation. So we have been working with the folks that are trying to move forward with Emerald Village that you're probably aware of. I think that is their intent exactly. We've been talking to them from the standpoint of doing the tiny houses on a development site, a single lot, not necessarily a cluster subdivision. That is always an option as well, where the property, you know, the house owner, in that case, would also have the potential to own the lot that they're on as well. So there's different options of how you can deal with it. I think one of the things that we did learn, that I mentioned in Opportunity Village, is the oversight. So that's one of the biggest things, you know, in doing a site tour out there, and just even from a building code standpoint, oversight, as you can imagine, on a village like that, and how it's managed, how people interact and interface, is really important, and whether the city's involved in that or not, or if the property owners are. So I think that that's part of the focus for them, of keeping it all on one development site versus individual lots, so that they would have more of that co-housing environment. They're all working together, they're trying to kind of overcome a lot of those kinds of issues, but they do have a buy-in to potentially for the house or the dwelling itself, whether that's through condoizing the development site, or whether it's just through a legal agreement. That's kind of some of the stuff that they're saying they're working out. So we're working with them on that process, but there's only a handful that I'm aware of, and they're usually in the county, not in an urban environment like the city of Eugene. So the examples are not really, you know, same-for-same as far as comparisons for what we're looking at within an urban, dense, smaller lot kind of environment.
So why wouldn't a, you know, homeowners' association model work in that configuration? Or is there some kind of way to tweak that model to make that work in this context? Because again, if people have investment in the place that they live in, they're more likely to, you know, keep that property up, to self-manage and self-govern, you know, other folks who may not be as vigilant as they are with, you know, the properties that, or the units that they're managing, or the units that they're occupying?
Well, it's true. It's, you know, a little different when you're looking at, you know, a structure that's 10 by 10, and there's just not much space. So, you know, one of the things, when we were going through Opportunity Village, the last project that they had was actually people coming in, building these storage boxes kind of alongside their structures, because they just don't have enough storage.
Right.
And one of the things that was indicated to us is there is a tendency for hoarding when you don't have anything. You have so little, you know, there's that tendency. And so that's kind of the oversight piece as well. So you might have a homeowners' association with people that are all having those same tendencies, may not be the same as an over-branching umbrella of kind of the community benefit and how that community interfaces with the rest of the neighbors around that as well. And so there's just that question. It's not to say it couldn't work. It is just, you know, an interesting dilemma, I think, that they're facing on that, you know, particular situation.
And the last question on this, and by extension is this, have you seen or heard of any lending institutions that are developing, you know, the kind of products that would accommodate this kind of ownership, or, you know?
I didn't really see, nothing kind of came up through my research. I'm not aware of anything specifically, unfortunately. Sorry.
I'm just kind of logically thinking what would be the next step in terms of...
Some of those developers...
...people being able to finance some of this.
You know, that are kind of fronting for, you know, fighting for Emerald Village might be a good ones to kind of ask on how they're approaching that.
Alan?
Yeah, when I asked for this work session, I wasn't really thinking about it necessarily as only a low-income type program for homeless folks. There's a multitude of types and reasons and ownership structures, as your presentation clearly puts forward. And there's different variations of it all over the world. Japan and other folks have incredibly small houses. But it was inspired by Opportunity Village, and it does provide that kind, the option of housing for, that's much, much more affordable than the traditional single-family house. And there's a whole bunch of different issues around that in terms of building codes and zoning and density requirement. I guess one of the things that pops up for me is, what's the definition of a house? And so for instance, can a house not have a bathroom, not have electricity, not have plumbing, not have heating, and have all of those provided by a joint-use facility-like model that is like in a village model like Opportunity Village?
Right. And actually, I brought Mark with us, who...
I'm a friend.
Can perfectly...
You're essentially, what you're asking is, could it essentially be an SRO, but desegregated?
It is like an SRO. And, but I think a house actually has to have all those different components.
Congregate kind of living, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the building code, the definition of a house requires permanent provisions for cooking, sanitation, sleeping, dining, living. Thank you. So to look at Opportunity Village, those actually aren't dwelling units, they're sleeping rooms. Yeah, so it's, they're almost like all detached bedrooms in a sense, with communal areas for cooking and communal sanitation facilities.
Is that permitted within the code?
Yes.
So an Opportunity Village could exist in an R01?
So that would be the clear distinction. Mark is with building code, I'm with land use, so...
So we always bring up the next point, which is the land use, so...
So no is the answer to that. So no is the answer to that.
Density requirement of 14 people per acre, right?
Right. And so the single-room occupancy.
14 people in an acre, you wouldn't be allowed.
Well, and really, that's the thing. So there's no definition of a dwelling, you're correct. There could be detached bedroom basically units that are part of that definition of a dwelling, which is no more than five unrelated people. So that doesn't give you much. The single-room occupancy is the closest thing, but the definition specifically states that it has to be at least nine bedrooms within a building. So you could do something like minimum. So you could do something which actually might be more economical and feasible. It could also still be potentially condoized, so they still owned it, but, you know, from a sustainable standpoint, it's questionable whether or not that could be more sustainable to have maybe, you know, three or four of those buildings that they owned the room and had communal shared, you know, kitchen, some hangout living area and maybe bathrooms, or they might have their own bathrooms. That is an option for them as well.
Right. It's like that function in Microsoft PowerPoint where you can explode the pie graph. And so at one point they're all connected, but then when you explode it, they're not connected, but they are connected.
Right.
And so if you have the, all those communal facilities like bathroom, cooking, laundry and kitchen in a central area and then all these things related to it, and what I'm thinking from the code, it allows you to have those and they don't all necessarily have to have heating, sanitary, kitchen, and they can all relate back to the central.
So you get back to the definition of a family. From a density standpoint, SROs, it's four SROs equal one dwelling. So as far as whether or not you could have that in R1, the answer would be no. It's, there's not even allowance through a PUD or anything to have an SRO project in R1. So you could do a CUP in R2 or they're permitted outright in R3 and R4. You would have to change the definition of a single-room occupancy to allow them to not be within the same building. So basically to, you know, replicate what Opportunity Village Eugene has done, you would have to change that definition.
Okay. The definition of a single-room occupancy.
Right.
And it still wouldn't be allowed in R1.
Correct.
You could do a condition use permanent R2 permitted outright in R3 and R4.
Correct.
Which are multifamily.
Yeah.
And then ironically in C2 and C3.
Even C3, yeah.
I had another question about your graph or chart. And then there's tiny houses are outright permitted industrial areas?
That was one of the code changes when we did the employment industrial zone. It was not allowed previously. It's usually in replace to like a security trailer or security office where usually that's, that was allowed use in itself. So instead of, you know, changing that to just a single family, just open that option.
Right. Caretaker, maintenance, so it's one family.
Exactly.
So in order to accommodate things like Opportunity Village, you'd have to, we'd have to do some changes.
You would have to, to those zones, which is specifically to point out Opportunity Village is currently in an industrial zone.
But in the residential zone, we'd still have to make some changes.
Yes, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. I really appreciate the depth of this. This has been a topic that's been really of interest for me for a while now. And I have to express my gratitude for how thoroughly and quickly the staff has jumped on this, both the building code staff and the land use staff. It's really been great how much information they have compiled on this subject so that we can be thoughtful about it. And this is really great. And one of the real ahas for me was to realize that many of the issues that I thought were obstacles actually are not. We are much closer to being able to have tiny housing than I had originally thought. And I approach tiny housing not for any one purpose, but actually for a multitude of purposes. It can, it can meet many, many different needs, whether you're building one in your backyard or whether you're building an actual subdivision or cluster of them. I think it's important for, at least from my perspective, to approach Opportunity Village as not a good example of tiny housing for all the reasons we've been talking about. I think of that more as shelter. But Opportunity Village is one of the steps in getting to an Emerald Village, which would be tiny housing because it would have kitchen, it would have bathroom facilities, and also would have not only the opportunity for rental, but also the homeownership that Greg talked about. I think that's a very important element because we want to move from shelter to rental to ownership. Some of those leaps are enormous and a lot of people can't get over those. But to have a tiny house option, which you could finance, you may be talking, if you can get the price down, $20,000, $25,000, that's within the realm of like a car purchase. And figuring out the collateralization and an institution willing to do it. And I've talked to a couple of folks who say, oh, I know institutions that would be willing to do it, but it's worth investigating to find out. I think provides opportunities for people who could never saved for a home, to be able to save for a home. And it's a starter home, it's a first home, but it could begin. I could see these in developments like Emerald Village, which I think is a tremendous idea, the next, the next growth opportunity for this kind of an idea. But also as things that could be built in people's backyards as a way to achieve density without creating destruction of neighborhood livability. I've been very sensitive to the fact that sometimes the only opportunities people see for creating density in their neighborhoods is building apartment buildings. And I wouldn't want that in my backyard either. And if that's the only option you have, I could see how that would be resisted. But if you could have a tiny house option, a secondary dwelling unit that was a tiny house as an option to create density in backyards, now we're starting to talk about ways to create some additional capacity without destroying neighborhood livability. And so that's another interest that I would have in this whole option. And I know that that's already occurring. So it's not an idea that its time has come. Its time has come and gone. It's being built and I want to make sure it can be built legally, durably, and appropriately.
George?
Thank you. Yeah, interesting that this comes up today because my wife and I were going out, driving out in the country this, this morning. And up over the rise comes a tiny house being pulled by a one-ton Ford pickup. So they are out there. In fact, if you're going up toward Marcola and Marcola Road, just before you get to the county weigh station, if you look off to your left, there's a little cluster of them in amongst some trees. So they are, they are out there, it's just a matter of where. These are, all these different types of housing that you've described are pretty much permitted somewhere within the city. So one of the types is without having to go through any special process other than pulling permits, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
My concern, and I think it's, it's been addressed in the presentation, is that we as a city don't take any shortcuts or overlook any of the codes involved in these, these types of houses, primarily for not only the safety of the people that are living in them, but the neighborhoods that they're being built in. So that was the only concern that I had about if we were going to make special exemptions for these different types of housings, but I don't think we really, I really need to be concerned about that right now. And I'm glad to see that this is coming out. Now, you know, we've been, and I don't remember which channel it is on TV, it might be the Home and Garden Station or something, but there is a program that's been on for a couple of years now called Tiny Houses. And that's all it is, is that these people go and they, they tour three different little tiny houses and they purchase one. And I think the biggest one that they've shown was 600 square feet, so.
Yeah, that's big.
Yeah, that was a big one.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation very much. I want to take off on an idea that Greg mentioned and that I mentioned the other day when quoting his study that I sent off to John, that the single best way, the single most rapid way for a community to close its income and its wealth gap is through homeownership. So I would like to see if we're going to participate in anything that encourages this trend, that we do everything we can to encourage that they be owned rather than rented. I think that to the degree that we are making, as I said the other day, you know, to the degree that we have a higher percentage of owned homes, we are doing more to prevent poverty. To the degree that we are planning for more rental units, we are planning for poverty. And I would like to see us moving away from that. So I would hope that we're going to encourage whatever, in whatever possible way we can, that the more this trend continues, the more of them are planned for ownership.
So I just want to bring into this conversation that as we look at these things, you have to, if you're looking at how you provide housing for the large number of people who need it, the question is about what you get for your dollars. If you have a certain amount of money that you have to build housing, how, what's the best way to get the best number of units for people who need them? And that's kind of a tension between the, I think, some of the smaller units that are separate and the more clustered or apartment-type things. And just figuring out in terms of what we want or what options we want to have, which way moves the dial more, I think is something we're going to, and the other issue we have around affordable housing, and we could be maybe a model of trying to push back on it some, but right now, CDVG, I mean, they're very tight on what they will fund and their rules are very strict over what kind of housing they'll allow you to spend their dollars on. And a lot of these options are not something that they would approve. So that's another thing to think about. The other thing is the issue of manufactured housing, which actually provides quite a bit of housing for folks out there, small manufactured units. But the issue seems to be, to me, to be that people feel vulnerable when they don't own the property that they're manufactured housing, whatever kind it is, is on. So there may be something there where there's public ownership of land in oversight of land that protects the rights of people that can have some kind of owned, owned units on that land. So that gets away from that fear of the owner making a decision that would threaten your, your property. And the only other thing I always keep in mind is, and that's because Glenn told me that a long time ago, you probably heard me say it several times, he always said to me, ask for what you, how you get to what you want, as opposed to can I do it? That you'll find in terms of code or anything else, if you have a notion about what it is you're trying to get to, to ask that question gets a different application of law and code than can I, can I do it? I think those are different questions. One is how do we get in to that direction? So just putting all that out for you guys to think about. Alan, you're up.
Yeah, I had a couple of further information requests along the same lines. Can you give us a list of things that we would need to change to allow a village-type concept in each of the zone types?
I can bring that back for you.
Come on, top of your head.
Yeah.
Further information to bring back. And the second one relates to thing that I had, Councilor Evans had, which is about finance, financing options. And if you could explore that a little bit more about not only tiny housing within R1 and the Rs, but what about village concept, can that be financed at a bank level? Any examples that have? I mean, most of the examples you gave were more traditional. I think what we're kind of talking about in the village concept is a little bit different than that. Because most of the cluster housing, things like that, those are regular homes basically that are centered together as opposed to more of a village concept, which might have joint-use facilities for cooking, cleaning, sanitation.
Right.
So finance options for those kind of options as well.
Okay, Greg?
Picking up on both Mike and Alan's points, one of the things that I was thinking about would be us modeling or piloting a public-private partnership option with a financial institution. Probably this would be more up the alley of a credit union than, you know, say a traditional commercial bank, but, or even there might be some commercial banks that could be interested in this. This could be one of those new cutting-edge products that, you know, would be able to, you know, be the best of both worlds for a lot of people. Because if we can begin to get people into, you know, tiny housing for, say, somewhere between $15,000 and $25,000, give them a chance to create and build equity, and then eventually at some point, as their status changes, as their incomes rise, they have already modeled a way to, you know, go forward with a bigger homeownership piece. As well as this is an opportunity too for people to possibly repair some credit issues and some other things that they may have, you know, fallen on hard times and that kind of thing, and be able to be an educational tool in terms of money management and homeownership and all the rest. So there's a lot of things that we could really, you know, get out of this as demonstrable public benefit and helping people to become much more self-sufficient in a real, concrete way, instead of looking at this as a situation where people are saying, well, we need more affordable housing. And the mindset has always been, you know, build, you know, apartment buildings and create rental situations and leases and stuff that, you know, we've seen over since the 1930s that that hasn't worked. Ergo, you know, most of the cities back east have, you know, blown up their housing projects to go with a different kinds of way of looking at things and different models. I think we could be really on the cutting edge of something very big and profound in terms of a mental, a psychological community shift in how we do things. So I would really like to see us explore talking to a receptive financial institution about how we can model this in a really proactive way.
I know that sometime in, in the last, maybe five years ago, Bank of America was really into affordable housing and partnering up with the communities over affordable housing. There may be something in that history. I was reminded when I was talking earlier about manufactured housing, and I think I saw a little village of tiny Airstreams that people were living in. And then Emerald Village, they're struggling with the financing aspect of this. So if there's, and they're essentially trying to do a lot of what you're talking about. So if there's some way that we can figure out how we can partner with that, that would seem like the logical direction to go. St. Vinnie's and credit unions are already doing a lot of education right now on how to, people can stay in their housing and things of that sort. That's a united way, I think, has been a priority for them. So that's, that piece is there, out there, out there also. And the last thing I want to say is that someone mentioned to me the other day that one of the best types of affordable, this is not microhousing, but affordable housing right now are, are attached houses. They're not all, they're just attached so that, they're just a lot less expensive to build. So something to think about in our repertoire of thinking. Alan, you want to finish us up for this evening?
Yeah, I was trying to think of different types and from just non-traditional, more than just non-traditional housing that are much more affordable for folks and, and with different models like Greg was talking about with private partnerships. Kind of the session we're going to have after this at 7:30, we're going to talk about CDVG and the home program, which are federal dollars. I'm wondering if there isn't, if those programs are available for us to be able to use some of the monies to either buy public land to put housing on that people could then own or, or build the structures and then sell them or some other kinds of things. And if there were other types of pools of money like that, maybe through lending institutions like Wells Fargo or Bank of America or credit unions, somebody that might be able to create a public-private partnership loan that could then be paid back by tenants, sort of like on a mortgage basis, to create that kind of cooperative housing. So I'm trying to think a little bit more out of the box in terms of just traditional, traditional housing models, in terms of what's, what we can do, how we do it and how we finance it. So if there's, if we can use those other kinds of programs that you could find out and if there's other types of financing that we could look at, that'd be great.
And I'm sure Stephanie could answer that. And I'm sure Stephanie could answer that at your 7:30 session tonight as well.
We're talking about it.
You might.
Yeah, I think the answer is yes.
Yeah.
You can, but.
The only other thing I would point out is there is a SDC waiver that can be obtained once the funds are used, then, you know, they're gone until next year. But for affordable ownership and rental units, pardon?
Yeah, I was going to say, if that's what you want to come.
Yeah, so that's also something that can also benefit and help as well.
Thank you very much for the, the introduction to the topic, and I think we'll be taking it up again, so thank you very much. And before we close out this meeting, I want to put, ask where to put the consent calendar on.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, none in opposition? Thank you. We're done for this meeting, see you at 7:30.